We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Okay, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in all its faults and its wrongs. So I see the first item on the agenda is Julie McGoon and Charlie Woodworth, the TIF Advisory Committee Funding Recommendation.
I'm just finishing up the last score sheets that came in, so could we move on and I'll put them in the appropriate folders and then we'll be ready? They just arrived.
Okay. So that means we're gonna go into an executive session?
I think we can do that last. That was going to involve our treasurer, and actually she would like to do that in open session.
Okay.
So we can move down the rest of the agenda.
So we can do the clerk's report?
Sure, and I'll finish up this.
Oh, it's here.
Um, I have minutes for you. And I can be against you. I'll bet that.
I brought him. Didn't we bring him? I brought him up tonight?
Yeah, I sent him.
Yeah, I agree. I move to accept the clerk's report.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion? Okay? Are we gonna do the treasurer's report now, or are we gonna delay that until we have Pam? What she's gonna do on the phone? She's there.
Yeah, she's on.
Okay, can we do the treasurer's report next time? Pam?
Yep, yes, this is Pam. Yes, we can do the treasurer's report right now.
Okay.
I'll try to speak up so you can hear me well. I have reviewed the April and May checking account reconciliations, and they are available at my desk in the office for, I don't know, the next day or two until I actually go in, and I'll file them away then. And then, I believe we have two warrants that I know of. I know there was, there is a TIF warrant and a county warrant. If there are any others, I think Vicki or Vicki can let you know. I didn't really have a chance to look closely at county warrants, but I always try to do that when I do go in, so at least I'm aware, you know, of what money is being spent for. And then the third thing I wanted to mention, it's a little out of the ordinary of what I report on, but, you know, we do have cash management accounts. We don't have investments anymore. Those were in the form of CDs, usually certificates of deposits. But our cash management accounts allow us to move money around, so I think we're in a good position in order to be able to use money or to put money maybe into one of the cash sweep accounts that we do use when they seem to be higher yielding, although at this time, they're only somewhat higher yielding than what we have in our checking account, which is, it's a different kind of account, it's just called a repurchase account, but it works similarly. Anyway, I'm, you know, it's unfortunate, but you're probably not surprised that the interest rates on all of our bank accounts have gone down somewhat. So I just wanted to let you know that Vicki and I are, you know, we talk about that periodically, and it all depends on what our cash flow is gonna be like, how much money we might move from a sweep account into the checking account, or the other way around. But just so you're aware, that we're not making the interest that we were making, you know, a couple of months ago.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's it.
That's it? Any questions to Pam? No? We are made way to motion then.
So I, I move to accept the clerk's, the treasurer's report?
Second motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Oh yeah, I don't know if we're supposed to do that. All right? So item number three would be...
So we're gonna have a discussion about the, uh, what we're gonna deal with executive session, or are we gonna have that?
She wants to have it in public session.
Right now.
Could we do that right now?
Sure.
Okay. So we were originally going to go into executive session for duties, responsibilities, and compensation? That must be you, Pam?
Yes. Yes, that's me.
So what's the issue?
I hope, I hope you can hear me okay. I noticed in the minutes of the last meeting where I was not present, that you had like a question about my salary, what it should be, and so forth. But I wanted to kinda update you if that, if you have a few minutes. And I do appreciate the opportunity that Julie indicated to go into executive sessions, but I don't expect to need to use it this time, just to let you know how the treasurer's office is working these days, but because it did deal, the question did deal with my salary. Anyway, I thank you for putting me on the agenda. So I just wanted to make like basically three main points about how things are going, because obviously things have changed since I first put my budget together back in the winter. And I did meet with Julie, actually it was a couple of months ago, it was a conference call, and Vicki and I, I think, were there, and we're kind of talking about the work that both offices do. That's my recollection. And I, but I do recall saying that right now, it's working well for me to be working the hours that I'm working, the number of hours that I'm working. And by that I meant, on average, like two days, it would be two workdays of six and a half hours. That's how it's been since I started in January. But at this time, I wouldn't be able to take on more hours just because I have other obligations. But the point I wanted to make is, I think things are working out well, and I think Vicki has told you that the work of the treasurer's office is getting done. And, you know, because we don't have a lot of interactions in the treasurer's department with the public, the public doesn't always understand all of the many functions or operations that we do, and, you know, I think of us as number crunchers. Basically, that's the finance part of it. So part of what I think is working well is that Vicki and I probably both feel the same way about this, is that there's been less distractions how we've been working. You know, I don't, I don't mean to try to put a positive spin on this awful virus situation, but I'm happy to know that it's going well for Vicki, like with the pre-audit, to work remotely, to the extent practicable. And for me to work on a staggered basis, which I'm gonna just mention in a couple of minutes. I do love my job, I love it. I still love my job. It's always been my dream job to get this job. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody about what specific tasks I actually do as a treasurer, but I'm not gonna do that today. I'm still working 13 hours per week on average, and when a lot of things have to be done by me, I'll work more than 13 hours. When it's less busy, I work less than 13 hours. And that's exactly why I didn't really think anything has to be negotiated about my salary. I've always felt that my salary should be based on the hours I'm actually working. And that, on that app, talking about the on-average part of the job, like last fall, I had to work one week that was 37 and 3/4 hours. And I keep really good track of my time and what I'm doing in my calendar, so I can go back and explain what I did that week, actually, which was payroll on Monday, and I was at the commissioners' meeting on Tuesday. And then I also had to come into the office when the auditors were doing their fieldwork on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I was in the office a lot that week when Vicki had to be out, and I actually got quite a bit more done than just the things I just mentioned, because I was actually there. But that means that because that was not the average week, there are gonna be some other weeks when I was not gonna be there, you know, the full 13 hours. Just to explain that, this is the way I've prioritized how my department works. It's very flexible, and it, I think it works really well. It, it's a team effort on Julie's and Vicki's and my part, really, to make sure that the office has functioned well that way. So my second point, I'll get to. It's, it's, as I indicated, it is a really small department, Vicki and me. And we do have Mary to help with mostly clerical things. And I just think it's really important that I and my colleagues act as prudently as possible in the face of this very dangerous virus. And, you know, we, I, the way to sum it up is that we perform key financial functions, for example, payrolls every two weeks for about 75 Franklin County employees. And, you know, the bottom line is that you have two people, Vicki and me, who are capable of doing the Franklin County payroll. And if something happens to either Vicki or me, a lot of people are gonna be affected. I don't even wanna think about if something happens to both of us. So both Vicki and me, we really need to stay safe, and so does Mary. And I just wanted to kinda explain to you a little bit about what I'm doing. I did, I was in last week when Nick was putting in the doors, and I just think they're very beautiful, and we'll, I expect that they're really, it's a really positive thing, I think. And I think they'll be a real help for those of us who actually work in these offices. It'll be interesting to see how people feel about them and react to them, and I have no idea, but I just was feeling very positive about that step. And when I had got out my tape measure, since I'm one of three people in a shared workspace, I wanted to see how it is comporting, how it conforms with the Phase 2 checklist, which came out in May for public and community buildings, because it's, it sounds like a mandate. People in a shared space must be able to maintain six feet of physical distance. And using my tape measure, I could see that anybody who uses a copier is less than six feet from me, and anybody who walks past my desk is five feet, and then anybody who walks past Vicki or Mary's desk is less than five feet from them. And it's basically out of compliance to have several people working or even going through there. So I am continuing to encourage Vicki to work by phone and internet from home, to the greatest extent practical. That would leave the office available if she didn't have to be there, for Mary to be there without having to be thinking constantly about distancing and that type of thing. And that, that phrase, "to the greatest extent practicable," that's actually in the checklist for Phase 2 several other times for other practices. So it says to me that there are important guidelines.
Pam, Pam? Pam, you have a question?
Can I, let me, can I just, this is Charlie Webster, can I just ask you a question, Pam?
Now, I'm gonna talk about how I'm working on a staggered basis, so if you can just wait a second, and then I'll be done, and you can ask a question.
There you go.
If you don't mind, I'd like to finish what I'm doing.
Perfect.
Um, I, I do go in on a staggered basis because we cannot maintain physical distance in our office. And so going in on a staggered basis, that is expressly consistent with the Phase 2 checklist. This means me going in after hours and weekends, but it has worked out well, is I can also take work home, which I do at home. Things like spreadsheets, data, adding up data for forms that we have to file, that type of thing. But I also, the whole time I'm in the courthouse, even if it's after hours, which it always has been, I wear a face covering and I follow all of the state of Maine and U.S. CDC guidance for disinfecting. And I'm still coming in, usually, two different days a week to do whatever I have to do in the office. So that's kind of it, you know? It doesn't sound like much, 13 hours, but, you know, I'm able to maintain my priorities and be happy to talk more to anybody about what I actually am doing, because, like I said, it's not visible to the public what we do as number crunchers. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
So Pam, the question came up because we've added, we've had to add $10,000 in the budget to cover, to help, it was part-time help, because you're not in here helping the things that need to be done in a short period of time. We've also, this is a result of the Budget Committee questions and the public speaking, at least to me, how about the other commissioners. The question is, we've, we've had to add $10,000. As a result of this, we've cut the commissioner's office down from five to four days a week to save money. That's why we did it, to save money, so we wouldn't have to have more personnel. And it's, it's just hard for me to, for the public to understand if, why I went paying $10,000 more in part-time help, when up until this point, you were covering enough so we didn't need that person. So that's the question. And, you know, that's why I asked, or whoever, one of us asked, why, you know, to talk to you about this. I mean, we, we, we've got this $10,000 that we seem to have to put in the budget, because you're not here to do the things that you did before.
Okay, is that, it's sort of a two-part question, I think.
Okay.
Um, because I think you're asking me, why did we go over budget this past year? Because that's why I increased the amount in my budget. That's why I increased, sorry.
You didn't go over the budget?
Go ahead, finish the question.
I, I don't think you went over the budget. I don't, I don't remember, can we call that? Uh, the, the issue is, we have added two...
We did.
Oh, we did. Excuse me. Okay, that, okay, part-time, all right. But we, we've added $10,000 additional in our budget for next year to replace the duties that you were doing.
Okay, well, do you want me to answer that one?
Sure.
I will answer that one. My, I don't have actually a job description like non-elected officials do. We talked about this years ago. I actually was writing up a job description of what I actually do, and it was decided by the commissioners that I was not gonna be allowed to write up a job description. And the, I guess the fallback, it was said, was that, "Look at the statutes." And if you look at the statutes, which I do periodically, of the treasurer's duties, I don't have to have hours that are open to the public, which is a good thing, because nobody frankly comes in to see the treasurer. The things that people come to the shared space that I work in, which is, I have a desk basically in there, it's not my office. They come in to talk with someone about human resources, or they need to reach out to Julie about the TIF or the UT, or they just need a notary, or they wanna know where the courthouse is, where they can pay their fine. So a lot of those things where I would actually interact with the public was, it was either something that was not really my department's duties and responsibilities, but, you know, I was there, so I would go to the door if nobody else was there, or answer the phone if I had time to answer the phone. But it was really more the kind of inquiry that should be answered at a help desk, a lot of times, really. Anyway, the, I mean, I'm just trying to make the point that it's not my job to be in the office to be a receptionist or answer the phone, the types of things that, really, if you wanna have your office open, you have to have somebody there who's gonna do those things, but that's your decision, you know, as commissioner.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if that's really all that the $10,000 will pay for though, because actually my budget did go over, and I was not doing that.
Okay, Pam, we have a question, another question.
Okay.
Okay, Julie?
No, it's not a question. I just wanna be clear on for every, to make sure everybody understands how I did the calculation of the $10,000, just to make sure that we're very clear. So we knew Pam was not going to be coming into the office, because she does, if Vicki's busy, she'll pick up on the phones, it's a huge help. She will tend to people that do come into the office. So she was actually general office, I'll bet, you know, directing people in the appropriate ways. That frees Vicki up to get, you know, her work done. So if Pam is not gonna be there going forward, which she indicated to us months ago, when I did the calculation, Vicki and I said, "Okay, so we're gonna need Mary." We were thinking three days a week, because we were thinking Mondays, Tuesdays, and Fridays. And then we had the discussion with you, we said, "Gee, it was really slow on Fridays, we don't need really to be open on Friday, so let's eliminate that one day." So when I did the calculation, I counted on Mary to be there, to be clerical support and just general office support on Mondays and Tuesdays each week going forward, and also to cover four days a week when either Vicki and I are both on vacation at the same time, because you're gonna need somebody there at that point. So that's how we came up with the $10,000, five in each budget.
Mary covers the office when you're not here, right? In part-time, is she?
That's right, but she's gonna be, it's as needed in the past. Going forward in the new fiscal year, she's gonna have a regular Monday, Tuesday schedule each week.
Mary is?
Yes, in order to assist Vicki.
And how about Wednesday and Thursday now?
There will be either, I'll be in the office, or Vicki will be working remotely those days.
The office is gonna be covered.
The phone will be answered, there may not be somebody in the office, just similar to what Tim and Amanda do. There are days when there may not be somebody in the office all the time. But the phones will be answered every day, Mondays and Thursdays.
Would you ask Pam to do any covering in the office those four days?
She's indicated she's not coming in to work.
Right.
So that's why we're paying, we're, we're planning on paying Mary to have a regular two-day schedule to cover those days that Pam normally would have been in to assist.
So we used to work as a team, the three people in the office?
Absolutely. And Pam, and if Vicki and I needed to be out on a Monday and Tuesday, or, I mean, or a Wednesday, a Thursday, Pam would move her day and come in on a Thursday if we needed the coverage. Yeah, she's been flexible, no complaints about that at all. But we just need that other person in the office physically to get, to get done what needs to get done on a regular basis.
I would think that she would wanna work in the office those two days a week to do the, help Vicki with the payroll and stuff.
Who, Mary or Pam?
So Pam, this is Charlie again. The reason we didn't want a job description is it's not our job to, you were elected, and we know that, and you should get compensated, we understand that. We don't want to tell Joyce or, or the judge, or Susan, or you. You were elected, you know, we understand the process, the people voted for you, and you're here to do the job. Question I have is not, I'm still stuck on the $10,000, we have to come up with $10,000 because, and you have, I don't really care why you don't show up. If Joyce and Susan only wanna work 10 hours a week, I can't stop them, I can't make them come in here, but we, the only option we have is to look at the salary or the benefits or something that people are being paid and say, "Okay." It's gonna cost us $10,000, because for whatever reason, whatever your choice is, you're not coming in. Uh, you know, I remember in the last campaign, you know, you talked about being in the office two days a week. Your opponent said he would be in the office two days a week. So something's changed, that's okay, but we have to look at the salary, and we, obviously you're gonna get paid for your job, you have to get paid, we want you paid. But the question is, where's that $10,000 gonna come from, or what part of it are we gonna?
I don't think that's okay, Charlie, you said, if she don't come in those two days, it's okay, I don't agree with that.
Well, she has a right to do it, she's elected by people.
It's her choice, she's elected, I realize that, but I think it's her duty to come in, at least two days a week, to do the, do the payroll and help Vicki on payroll and, and do the treasurer's stuff. I mean, why do we need a treasurer if she's not gonna come in?
Well, that's the discussion we have.
Okay, is it my turn yet?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, but keep it short.
Did you all, let me ask you this. Did you all understand what I said when I said I am coming in two days a week, but it is on a staggered basis? And the reason for that is because we cannot maintain physical distancing in our shared space if we are there together. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. I am coming into the office on a staggered basis. And if you, if you can, I would urge you to actually read the guidance. You know, the checklist for public and community buildings has, it's like three pages long, I think, but if you read it and understand it, we cannot work in that shared space, the three of us, or even two of us, I think, because we cannot maintain six feet of physical distance. You know, I like to say, I think our chairs could maintain the six feet of physical distance, but we don't just sit in our chairs for, for a shift, you know, three or four-hour shift, and work only at our desks.
But that's why they have...
Our operation is very active.
Pam, that's why they have the masks.
No, it's not.
Oh, it is.
Sorry, but if you read those guidelines, it is, it does not have to do with having the masks.
So Pam, I'll ask another question. Is there a way you could, would you be willing to come in? We are not, it appears that we're not every-day manned, so why wouldn't you come in on Wednesday when no one else is here but you, in the office, and so the office could be open by yourself?
Well, you know, you know, I, I'm constantly reevaluating the situation, and I'm not opposed to coming in in the future, but I don't have a date when I'm gonna say to you that I will start coming in one day a week. The only problem with your scenario is that it would be useful if I actually had something to do, you know, on that day that I was in there, otherwise I would be basically acting as your receptionist. And we don't do payroll on Wednesday. We do payroll on Monday and Tuesday, and it's been going quite well, so long as Vicki's able to continue doing it remotely. Now, obviously, you know, I'm there to do payroll if Vicki cannot do it, for whatever reason. And we will figure out a way for me to do it. That's all I can promise. But, you know, for me to just be in the office, that's, that's hours that are wasted that you've...
I don't think it's...
I don't really see it in terms of my department as treasurer's department.
I think that's being private of the team. Clyde has a question.
I almost forgot what it's gonna be. We hired Julie to be the manager, or the clerk, or whatever her title is in the office, to make sure that things run smooth as a team. And the treasurer is in that team, I thought. If, if, if not, we've got a problem. But I feel that we have a good team in our office, and it's being covered properly. And we have a good manager, Julie, to run, and it's hard for her to do everything too, I believe. But I, I, I think we're trying to create a problem here that, that we don't have.
Thank you.
Julie?
Pam, what, what if we, I mean, the commissioners are no, we're not meeting in the commissioner's office, what if we were to move your desk into that office, and that would separate you from, then we'd all be in three separate spaces?
You know, I'm willing to consider all options, I really am, Julie, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
I mean, I just, I just went downstairs to get a word, I'm thinking, while we're not using the room, why not, that would separate all three of us?
But that, I don't know if that solves the problem of someone going to the door if you aren't there.
I don't see that as an issue, I mean...
Okay.
I truly don't.
Let's talk about it.
I just looked at it, and I, I think we could work around it.
The way I'm looking at this is, and I'm an outsider looking in, is with what she has said, she doesn't wanna do any other duties but just her treasurer's. If somebody has that door, she doesn't wanna answer it. If a telephone rings, she doesn't wanna answer. But we have somebody there that will answer the phone and go to the window. I, and she confirmed spaces Julie has offered, her to have a different office, we can move out of there. Put Pam out in the back where the commissioners look at me. We can move out of there and go somewhere else.
I mean, she can just answer the phones from there and do her job.
She wouldn't be there hearing this at any waste. She wouldn't be there to hear this anyways.
Sue, did you have a question?
I guess I need something clarified, because the budget, the first budget here that we had, one of the budget committees brought up that money, it was said that it was for a person to come in and train because of possible retirement. That, that's what it was explained to me.
No, that's wrong.
So that's what it was said.
Can I explain?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it was never mentioned that Pam, because Pam wasn't coming in.
Yeah, it was very clear at the commissioners' meeting, it may not have been brought up at the budget committee, and I tried very hard to make it clear to the budget committee, and I had just explained this to Joyce. There are three different components to the commissioner's budget. $10,000, excuse me, there's $5,000 and a half of what is going to be required for Mary, then there is the remainder of what we are paying contractually to Lori Russell to be our COVID human resources person. So that's that one line item. Then there is an additional that will say new employee, I believe, Sue. That is the one that we had talked about getting somebody in maybe in January to work the last half of the year to either learn my position in doing Vicky's, so that should be.
But it was their priority?
Right.
But it sounds like everybody's coming down on Pam because y'all, y'all said we're putting $10,000 in because she's not at work, and I don't think that's accurate.
I, I disagree.
I'm just saying.
I disagree.
I think it's.
I think it's.
I think it's accurate.
I mean, this is, this is exactly the discussion we had with the commissioners. I mean, Vicky, I mean, chime in, it was two, two separate issues. There was the issue of the coverage in the office, and then there is the issue of whatever Vicky and I plan on doing in the next six months, we wanted to plan for somebody to come in. There were two separate items we discussed.
Yeah.
And I separated those in the budget, so there's no hiding of anything in that budget. Everything is right there for the public to see.
Charlie?
So, you know, the $10,000 is in, will be in the budget unless we take it out now. I, I would like to, I'd like to think that we can keep the office open four days a week and have somebody in there. If, if we can, then it seems to me if Pam's not willing to come in and work one of those days and have, by herself, or we can't come up with some kind of solution, then I'm not willing to spend, raise taxes $10,000 simply so because Pam chooses not to come in, and that's how I see it. Now, maybe I'm missing something here, but it looks to me like that's what we're doing here. I'm not suggesting we take $10,000 off her salary, I'm not saying that, but I think we need to look at the total budget and say, wait a minute, if she's not coming in, is it really fair to, to have you replace her and spend $10,000? Is it fair to, to charge a taxpayer for that when the job was being done up to this point? And I think if she had not been elected, somebody else would have probably done the job two days a week, that was what we were told, the job entailed. And I don't really care what you do on a Saturday, the most important day is Monday and Tuesday when they're, they get payroll. So if you don't want to come in, that's fine, you have a right to do that, and, you know, we'll base our, our salary on what the title of commissioners', title of treasurer's worth. That's how I look at it.
Respond to that, Pam?
Oh, oh, I didn't hear a question. Yeah, I still work 13 hours per week on average and I'm there to do payroll for Vicky, you know, she, she's a very valuable employee to me and she and I have worked really well as a team. You know, I don't know, I don't know, maybe one of you commissioners could come in and be in the office on Friday to, I mean, that would be a real in-person, I'm just trying to think of a solution, because like I said, I don't know that anyone would actually need to come into the office to see the treasurer. And, you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic. I urge you to be patient with how we're trying to work things out so that the office functions and, and so far, I mean, I just think it's working really well, the work is getting done and if you would recall, maybe you don't recall, but I recall back in the 1990s, I would be working in the courthouse, a lot of times at the Registry of Deeds, and the commissioner's office would be closed all day. So you might actually realize, you know, if you, if you remember that like I do, the commissioner's office was not always a place where anybody could just saunter in and get general information about, you know, where to pay their fine or how to get a divorce or birth certificate, immigration papers, that type of thing. And it certainly, if you did have me there one day, it certainly wouldn't be possible for me to take over some of the human resources aspects of what happens in the office by Vicky and Julie, because that's not my job. Anyway, I mean, I, I am willing to work with Julie and see if there is a solution to that, but I think you also have to realize that there's been a lot more just work put onto the office, and not just because of the pandemic, but over the years, you know, we have the Affordable Care Act and now you have a very arcane system for accrued leave that has to be accounted for, so there really is a lot more work for people in the department. I have had more work put on me by the US government and the state government by having increased filings and things like that that I do. So it's just, I don't really know that I can help you with that, Charlie, where the $10,000 comes from, but I know that we are in a good situation financially. Up until maybe April, we were making really good interest rates on our bank accounts up to, it really has been helpful in making sure that we're in a stable situation.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions?
Are we going to executive session?
No.
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 Because I was going to make a suggestion, from now on, if there's any executive session
and it's personnel, they're going to be here in person, not on the phone. I want them here in person.
She wouldn't come in?
Huh?
She won't come in?
No, I know, but if she goes, if we have going to executive session, I won't accept anything unless they're in person.
She didn't want executive sessions?
Yeah.
So I, I just want to just put my last two cents worth in. I mean, I, I feel like you guys totally didn't understand at all what the personnel issue was, and I'm afraid that may have gone forward to the budget committee as well, so hopefully we can clarify that and I will send an email, because I think, I hope I explained it well, because I tried to be very transparent in the budget, but the part-time that we currently have and the hopeful part-time that we'd like to have, so different issues, totally.
Totally.
Yeah.
It looks to me like the crux of the matter is that because Pam's not coming in, it's going to cost us an additional $5,000 because Lori's the other $5,000 for the.
Yeah, I, hey, if I could just chime in, Terry, I, I understand why you're thinking that, but to be honest, even within the past year or two, when I am working in the office and Vicky's not working in the office, I almost always ask if Mary can come in, and then that way I can concentrate on the number crunching that I have to do, and Mary is really good at answering questions, answering the phone. She usually would have some clerical work she could do. So we've already been kind of shifting that type of work away from me that I'm not very good at, which is, you know, answering questions about things that don't really have to do with the numbers, okay?
All right.
Just wanted to put that in there, that it's been happening already, that, that I probably would feel more comfortable not covering the office myself. I have not been comfortable covering the office myself, so I've had Mary in there.
Okay, Charlie has a question.
I have a question for Julie, actually. So you're saying it's not $10,000, it's really $5,000, the other $5,000 was?
No, no, it's five, it is, but it's $10,000 to cover what we need covered going forward. Five is in the commissioners', five is in the treasurer's.
Where's the money, is the money for the potential new person to cover training, that's a different amount?
That is correct, that's, that's not in the part-time. If you see the commissioner's budget, there is going to be the line item that is a combination of Mary and Lori, and I believe that is $11,000 off the top of my head.
$11,777.
That is correct.
Your new position, you put in $7,098.
Yep, so there's, there's different projects, we can't co-mingle, there's different things we're trying to accomplish.
$11,000, about 1,100 of that, or 1,000 of that is for Lori and the other $10,000 for the office?
No.
Sorry, but.
Five, $5,000 is for Mary out of the commissioners'.
Yep.
A little over five, it was $5,000, what was 778?
$11,777.
So it would be 577.
Mary and Lori together.
And then $6,000 for Lori.
Lori's not a temp, that's just the COVID thing that will go away.
That is correct.
That will go away.
Absolutely, and I, we'll have a discussion about that at a later date, I don't even know if that's going to continue into December.
Okay, so then, then it's really 5,800 then, not?
Roughly, 5,800 is a very good, no, it is 10, Terry, Charlie, because the other five is split up.
Oh, okay, good.
Into treasurer's, so yes, it is over, it's $10,000, actually, it was split equally, so it's like $11,000 to cover for that, actually.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add, the bottom line is for Vicky and I, in order to get done what we need to get done, we need somebody in there, just like Pam said, to answer the phone, assist us. Mary's a huge help to me, she's a huge help to Vicky, she's great with the public, I mean, there's only so, we can only spread ourselves so thin between the two of us, we need that support in.
So it sounds to me like you, Vicky and Pam and Mary ought to get together and resolve the issue.
I don't think that's possible at this point.
If Pam's not going to be able to come in for two days, then we've got an issue.
But I thought, I thought, no, no, she's refusing to answer to the public, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to explain why we picked two days for Mary, because Monday and Tuesday is payroll. And when I do payroll, I don't have a separate person to help me with that, because we need to double check everything before the payroll is actually finalized and so, and that, that can take a whole day itself to get everything, especially with vacations and holidays and things like that, the payroll is no longer at those times and stuff. So that's why we considered to have Mary in for those two days, so I have the support set to do the payroll, she can answer phones, do the cash app for me for those days and stuff, and then on the second day, we double check everything before we process the payroll. So I actually need, what, two days, and those are the four days that Pam, yeah, she can come in, so, and those are the days of the payrolls, so we have to have someone else in here to double check this. I would feel comfortable, and I'll have anybody double check my work before it's processed.
So whether Pam did it, is it necessary for her to be here Monday and Tuesday as well?
Well, that's what she always did, right?
Yes, I noticed that she always did.
Yeah, she always did, so Mary wasn't coming in and stuff, now that Pam is not coming in during those times, I'm some.
Yeah, so that's where the cost is.
That's where the cost is.
Okay, all right.
Now, Pam said that there wasn't room enough for everybody to work at the office, because on account of they got to have so much distance, then.
That's right, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion, that we put Pam in the back room and shut the door?
That's what I said.
She doesn't want to do it, so.
Why wouldn't that work?
Because she doesn't want to do it.
I, I said, hey Clyde?
Yes?
Clyde, I said that I would talk to Julie and see if we can work that out, okay? I said I would talk to Julie about that. Hello?
Yep, we heard you.
Yeah, we heard you.
Okay, yep.
So can I just say, let Pam and I have, have the discussion with Vicky, and it's also on the agenda that we're probably, we're probably going to need to have two more meetings this month, so we have plenty of time to revisit it before the budget cycle is over, if that's what the concerning issue is.
Okay, meanwhile, meanwhile, would you give, provide for us at the next meeting the salary and benefits for the treasurer?
Yes.
So if we decide we want to change that based on, we, this, we can do that. I'd like to know, I, I think the salaries are on 14, there must be benefits too, I don't, I want to be fair, but.
On, on who, Charlie?
On the treasurer.
On?
On the treasurer.
Okay.
So we have some numbers to know.
We want the exact amount.
Amount of treasurer's.
Yep.
Wages and benefits, yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we all sat?
Move, accept the treasurer's report?
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, all right. Can we go back to you and Charlie?
You bet.
Thank you, Pam.
So the TIF committee, we met via Zoom a week ago?
Yes.
And went over all the applications, we had a great discussion, and we are here jointly to, I'll let Charlie do the summary of all the applications and then I'll let you know what the scores look like, and we've got a lot of good projects this year, so where do we want to start, Charlie?
So we modified the process where at the letter of intent request, applicants or prospective applicants send in a letter of intent and they pretty much fill out a full application, giving us all the info. And then as the committee, they now raise questions, they, they go back to the applicant, you know, seeking answers to those questions, which tightens up the final application quite nicely. Either kicks it out or it tightens it up to making it a, an approvable project. So it worked out really well. We have, Faba came, is looking for marketing, they want to continue with their print material, and they've got their in-kind hours, and they're looking for $12,500.
So let's just act on it individually, I do believe.
Okay.
We'll do it that way, one at a time.
Sure.
And they're doing something quite different this year, they're, they're not doing, they're not requesting funds, they're still going to be doing their brochure.
Yes.
But they're going to be doing some mapping, and there was another brochure that they were going to be working on that focused more in the Eustis area, but the, that northern area in general.
And their, their mapping project was going to be in partnership with the Franklin County Chamber.
So they told.
So they're not going to do the pamphlet at that?
They do, but they're, but they're not requesting funds from the TIF for it, because last year we told them to look for something else in order to market the region in themselves, and that is exactly what they did, so. And they've got matching funds, some matching funds available, so. The committee scored it, it was four out of the Richard Farah State, where he's a member of the board, so it was unanimous amongst the four to support that project in the amount of $12,500.
Are you in motion to support that?
Go ahead, I couldn't hear enough, make a motion.
All right, I'll move the lead to support the $12,500 as recommended by the committee, by the advisory committee.
For Faba.
For Faba.
Second motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous.
Yeah, the committee was really pleased at the.
Oh, it's a point came back.
What does Faba stand?
Flagstaff Area Business Association.
Sorry about that, Pam? I mean, hey Julie.
We'll do that last.
Okay.
Apple's in here.
Yeah. Okay, next project was a, is a book, photography book on the Rangeley region. It's text and photography talking about, I'd say, all the traditional hunting, fishing activities that made the area the iconic Rangeley, Rangeley Lakes region. It is, everyone felt that it is an extremely high level of professionalism. They're in the process of the letter of intent and how to improve a stronger application, they wanted to see more matching funds come in, and so the applicant went out and was able to raise more money. So he is, he's, he's accomplished everything that the committee asked, and I think that is.
Yep, it was unanimous, and this was one of the most strongly supported applications that we had this year, so it was unanimous to support that in the amount of $25,000. Again, more nature-based tourism and marketing.
What's the name of the company?
It's.
Ben Pearson.
Ben Pearson is the individual.
Who was doing the photography.
Yeah.
So what are they going to, what are they going to do with the monies?
Publish a book and distribute it, so.
To market.
Everything is sort of a break even, just goes back to. Everything is a sort of a break even, just goes back to, goes into the book.
Is it a tome, or is it a...
No, no, it's, 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 he gave us more information than the committee asked for, as far as text and photography. But the partners he's pulled in, the Rangeley Lakes Heritage Trust is behind it, they are also adding to the project with editorial and, and as well as some written articles, who else is in there?
Seven Islands Land Company gave four thousand, Rangeley Lakes Heritage Trust, six thousand, in-kind for the photographer is forty thousand five hundred. So the total project budget was eighty-four thousand five hundred, the TIF request was twenty-five thousand. So he's got some good leverage.
I'd move that amount.
Second motion.
The Chamber of Commerce up there is behind this project a hundred percent, so all the entities up there, it's just promoting that region.
Sounds like same book, like Eustace.
Yeah.
Yeah, how fit is that? But no, sounds like a book. It's gonna explain everything in the region.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Is that what it is, similar to that book that Flagstaff Area did?
It's more based on the nature of the forest and the history.
Yeah, it's more on the hunting, fishing, the guiding.
Oh, okay.
Like, yeah, it's more of the, yeah, hunting and fishing.
What drew everyone there?
Promoting hunting, fishing, the whole...
I think it's been moved to executive, any further discussion?
I think it's a good idea, because on account of that fly, fly rod, Crosby. He's up in that area and everything, and, and I, I really think, I, I support that.
And that's what the committee said, Clyde, they're tied in with the previous projects we've done with fly fishing and that atmosphere, so.
All in favor of that motion?
Unanimous, thank you.
And next up, the High Peaks Alliance. So their project is, they're, they work with all the trail users, motorized, non-motorized. They map the region, and they want to be able to identify and map the full region, and take an inventory of all the trails and the caliber, and where they are in levels of disrepair, repair, where the funds need to go. So, our ATV, snowmobile, hiking, and biking.
Who's, who's asking for that?
The High Peaks Alliance, so it's a...
Where is that located?
They're in Phillips.
Phillips?
Yeah. Yep.
That's already been partially done by Dunland, the hiker.
Yeah, he's, well, he's written about them, and he's hiked many of them.
Yeah, I've read his books, so...
Yeah, he's, he's pretty thorough.
Yes, he is.
And these folks will be working, you know, he, I'm sure is already a resource for them.
So they received security income from the Betterment Fund of fifteen thousand, they're donating fifteen thousand. Volunteer time is five, so the total project cost is sixty-five thousand, they're requesting thirty thousand, and it was recommended by the four members of the TIF committee. I did not receive one from Richard Farrar's score sheet, but it was all scored highly and supported well by the committee.
I move we accept that too, thirty thousand those.
Thirty thousand.
Second motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous again.
Arnold Snowmobile Club, Arnold Trail Snowmobile Club up in Strat Eustace. They've got a trail that leaves, Strat Eustace heads north, crosses the Dead River, the West Branch of the Dead River, and heads up towards Kibbie and Canada. So, they need to replace that bridge. So it's a substantial project.
That isn't the same, that doesn't have anything to do with this below where they went and got into trouble on private land?
No, no, this, this, this is motorized, this is, you're talking the Larry Warren project for mountain...
Yeah, this is the snowmobile club.
This is a snowmobile club, this is totally different.
I thought that was a snowmobile club too.
No, that was gonna be hiking.
Aren't they mixed up in that?
No. No.
Okay.
So it's a substantial bridge, I'm not sure, was it forty feet span?
It's to replace a bridge, right?
Yes.
Where's the bridge?
It's north of Eustace, it crosses the Dead River, it comes up down from Chain of Ponds, that section.
And how much was the figure on that?
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
And it is the connecting trail to Canada, to and from.
So the club is putting in thirty-five thousand, they hope the Department of Commerce, should be Conservation, ten thousand. In-kind volunteer hours, twenty-five hundred. So the total project is eighty-five thousand, they are requesting thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So they've done a good job getting other sources as well.
I make a motion, we approve that reach.
Absolutely, second that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous again, I expect.
Good. The Aquasic ATV Club, they have a network of trails that is between Andover and Rangeley, and so this is trail work. It's, it's one bridge replacement, two bridge repairs, and, you know, it connects to the Andover ATV Club, with wiring.
That's Aquasic, is it?
Yes.
How much?
It's on the Beemis Track, they are looking for ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars.
And, and they had been approved for this project last year, but were unable to get to it.
Yeah.
So we, they got part of the project done, and we said, let's close out that grant here and have you reapply for this year, when they had new numbers for this project. So this is just kind of redoing what they had...
I move that amount, move that amount.
I second the motion.
Any discussion, don't know you had a question?
Across a village in Rangeley, so I'm trying to find out the unorganized, dark colored park.
Uh, the...
It's the Beemis Mountain Trail.
It's in the Beemis Mountain Track, or Beemis Track.
It is what, town center?
Uh, Township D, I think.
We've got a map.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot.
You're better at maps than Nitro.
Uh, this doesn't have the townships, but I can show you.
I just want things, that's all, because the money's for unorganized area.
Correct. We can get you that.
Yes, not for the village, of course.
There's a bridge there as well. Well, it will stimulate economic activity in Aquasic and Rangeley, the trail does. The users, you know, are probably staying in Aquasic or Rangeley and using that trail.
Township D, township D, oh, yep.
Are we all set on that?
Did we vote on that?
We did.
Uh, they, first and second, no, no vote.
Okay, thank you, all in favor of that motion? Unanimous again, ten thousand.
The bike, next, next up is the Bike Club in Carabassett. They have built out their trails in town, in the, within the town confines, and with the Flagstaff Region five-year redevelopment plan, they look into the state, Department of Conservation looks at the Bigelow Reserve and the Crockers. And four, five years ago, the state bought the Crockers from Plum Creek, so the high ground. And at that time, they designated a block of, two blocks of a couple hundred acres each to, for the development of mountain bike trails, the state did. So this is in Wyman Township, and it is near, you know where the AT Crossing is? At the top of Bigelow Hill, it's just north of that. So, it could be contiguous from Carabassett Valley, people riding the extensive network there that's very popular. You could ride up and over the Bigelow Hill in there, or you could drive and park. And so the Department of Conservation already has ten thousand dollars going into a trailhead that they will be doing. And this is for the beginning of a trail network out of that location. And it will rival the trail development that's occurred in the valley up to this point. So, they want a multi-year project, we told them we don't award multi-year projects, so this year they are asking for sixteen thousand dollars. And Julie can talk about the match and what they have.
Yes, it's, so the total project is thirty-two, and they are requesting sixteen, fifty percent. The funds are coming directly from the club itself, so.
Move the, the amount of sixteen thousand to this trail group, yes.
Sixty-eight thousand?
Sixteen, one-six.
One-six.
Sixteen. Fifteen thousand?
Sixteen.
Plus one. Plus one, yeah.
I make that motion, supporting it.
Yeah, okay, I, I'll second the motion, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The TIF committee has gone along with these applications?
Yes, every one of them, unanimous, yes.
And then Minnesota?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
That was my question, and I should've asked it before, but I didn't.
Yeah, for all of these, it's, they were unanimous this time around, yep.
I'm waiting for them to have a manufacturer up there that's gonna put twenty people to, to work. You know, Eustace and those areas need that.
Yep, they do.
They can't cut wood forever. You gotta find somebody, John.
We're working on it.
All in favor of that motion? See unanimous again.
Okay. Next up, Greater Franklin...
How many more you got there?
We're getting down to the end.
I've got two more.
And then a third we can talk about.
Yeah.
We've been busy.
Speak right up now.
Worthy projects, I will. So the next one is Greater Franklin Development Council, matching funds. So, they were before, we were before the committee last year with matching funds, and it's a similar type of request. We've raised fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars, and we would like to match that from the TIF at fifty thousand.
And again, that was unanimous from the all committee members to support the request for matching funds.
And they all get our newsletter, you guys get our newsletter, do you read that? I mean, if you do, it gives you a sense of the work that we've been doing, and I'm happy to, to go through that.
Would you have on brought any jobs in the area?
We are focused on preventing jobs from leaving. And if we can do that, then we'll see jobs coming.
That has been an increase.
Well, I don't know if you were reading the papers this winter, but there's a ski area in Rangeley. Saddleback Mountain has been dormant for a while, four years, there are new owners there, we are working with them to secure funding, to help them invest in, in the project so they can open this year, this winter, that's one project. The broadband work that you folks have supported, you were an early adopter, that is fantastic in the, where it's gotten us today.
I thought we couldn't do anything with TIF at Sugarlope, I mean, at Rangeley on the ski area, because it wasn't in an unorganized territory.
Correct, it can't come directly from the TIF, but what Charlie is saying is Greater Franklin Development Council is playing a key role in helping them to reopen the facility. So that's what some of the TIF funds that goes to Greater Franklin will be an assistance to them to get back, back open and ready to run this year.
Kathy?
Charlie, we don't, we don't, you guys, we don't reimburse you for the work on the, on the TIF committee, right? We don't somehow pay for that, right, I mean, if we give you this grant?
Yeah.
Do we give you extra for that too?
Yeah, we had, we had a contract with Greater Franklin long before, yeah.
And how much is that contract for?
That's ten.
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 Ten each.
Ten each.
Ten?
Ten each.
Oh, yeah, I knew, you're doing other stuff.
Don is a good point.
I was just gonna say Saddleback is a sandy river publication, which is an unorganized territory.
Yeah, but the money's not going to Saddleback, the money goes to Greater Franklin Development. And they're asking, what, what is he gonna do with these fifty thousand? He is helping them to secure some financial assistance.
Additional funding.
In order to continue to reopen the cross.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's not agreed with me, but...
No, correct, but I mean, we're viewing his work as a county line thing, which is a lot...
Can you give him sixty, fifteen?
And again, when, when we do anything with the TIF that affects the whole county, there is that proration of fifty percent, and Charlie is well under that fifty percent, I mean, not well under, excuse me, that was bad math. The total was a hundred and three, fifty from the TIF, so.
Yep.
That was really bad math.
And the, on the broadband work, while I have, while I have you here, so the early, the money that you invested on that plan, and Terry's seen our, the evolution of our projects. So, we're now at a, at a point where we have applied to the state, and we've applied to the federal government for support for a broadband project in the Carthage area of town. So it's Carthage, Wilton Weld, Temple, and Perkins and Washington Township, the unorganized territories. And it is a, it's a very strong application, and we've gotten to this point because of the commissioner's early investment in this. And we have an opportunity to push it across the line.
Good.
And that will affect job creation.
That's what I'm waiting for, I haven't seen that. And I talked to the people that open the businesses, and they don't know who you are, so I'm still wondering who you're talking to.
Have you talked?
And I see you, your paper, your newspaper, but, I don't know, anyhow, we used to pay thirty, and the TIF paid thirty.
That was in a dues though, this is, this is a match, so this is a totally different category. We no longer support them for dues. So this is the avenue that the committee recommended, where they were instructed if they could get raised funds, then the potential through the TIF would be to match, and that's exactly what they've done the last two years, Charlie?
Yes.
Correct. So it's not a dues, it's, it's a, it's a match for what's already been raised.
I agree.
Yep.
What do we wanna do, John?
I don't know. I'm not a real fan of what we're not doing, I, I have to think about it. Let's do the last one, and we'll go back to this.
The last one is...
We have an educational scholarship.
Educational scholarship?
Yeah. Denny Marble, recent graduate.
Recent graduate, very well spoken, directed, knows what he wants to do, and he's getting after it. And his rec, his references were impeccable, and he wants to go to CMCC for line work, right?
KVCC.
KVCC, sorry.
He wants to be a line...
Senior education teacher.
He actually was featured on Channel Six on one of the outstanding graduating seniors, they did a piece on him on the news, so. All his recommendations were fantastic, a lot of the TIF committee members know him and spoke so highly of him.
That was gonna be one of my questions, is what do we get out of this? I, I believe in education and supporting that, but for instance, we had one person from the Kingfield area, and we've given that person over twenty-five thousand dollars, and what do we get from that?
They have to sign off on an affidavit saying that when they graduate, they will make every attempt that they can to come to work within Franklin County. You can truly back, you can't make a guarantee, I mean, there's no guarantees, but they have to recognize that that is the intent.
That passes a muster of law to do that?
We, we have, that was a discussion we had with DECD four or five years ago, and yeah, DECD gave us a waiver on that, absolutely.
Good, but that's what I see, and I support, I'm supporting the education.
I agree.
I'd like to see, I, I don't know what that gal did, if she was flipping pizzas up there somewhere, she's probably still flipping pizzas, so that's not...
No, I don't believe she is, she's graduated, I know who you're talking about, and she's doing well.
How much money are we asking for this, young man?
Well, that was the question, so the committee was gonna leave that up to you, it was a small, he did not put a request number down. What is outstanding for him, and just give me a second here, after his aid program, it was twenty-seven thousand five hundred per semester, was not going to be funded. Everything else was paid for, and they were having him take that twenty-seven five hundred per semester out in loans.
Twenty-seven thousand or twenty-five, twenty-seven?
Two thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Twenty-se...
Yeah, he's, I believe, I believe he's looking for fifty-five hundred for the two semesters, for the year.
Yes, but we can only aw, we can award the whole thing, but it has to be contingent upon him, seeing his grades, correct? Being in good standing.
Yeah, see you better.
So this is one of the smaller requests we've actually had recently.
I'd rather do that with more people, and that makes sense to me, because the line's, you're gonna get something out of it, he's gonna go to work.
He's gonna go to work, see if he's...
So that, I can see that benefit.
Yep.
I move the fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
Second motion? Two semesters? Two semesters.
Two semesters with a grade approval.
Contingent loan, yeah.
I check, okay. Second, any further discussion? Charlie?
No.
All in favor? You know.
So there was one other application that came in late this year, and it's a public safety type application. And the committee was strongly in support of it. However, it was a rather significant request from the TIF out of public safety. That's why I asked Tim to come up. I knew the commissioners would have questions regarding the application. So basically, it is the town of Eustis, and they are requesting three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to purchase a, what was it, Tim? A tanker?
It's a combination, a tanker, a fire truck.
They're basing that request upon where they are the most local department to the wind power project and the whole UT area, increased residents up there, a lot of activity in that area recreationally, is what they were basing their request upon. So I said, told the committee I didn't know how you would feel about such a large request, how you wanted to continue with this application, should we have a discussion with them? How would you like to continue? So the request is here.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of money. Have they gotten any grants or apply for?
I do.
About just this, I would think that would be the first place they'd start.
So let me look at the budget quickly. So the total project cost was four hundred thousand. They have eight hundred, uh, eight hundred, eighty thousand in their savings account. If they sell their old engine, they're hoping to raise twenty-five thousand. Somehow the math doesn't add up, but they're requesting three-hundred-and-twenty thousand. That was the question I had. I mean, is there any way that? Because normally, obviously, this is gonna be used in Eustis. And the rule of thumb has always been that fifty percent proration between what's being used in, out of the unorganized territories and in the organized section. So obviously, I'd have to look at the guidelines. Public safety may be an exception to that fifty-fifty, but is that a precedent you want us to have? I mean, how do you want us to proceed with this?
I'd rather see them start with a grant. I mean, that's what most fire companies do.
Well, most towns don't, they're an organized town, they don't, we don't get a grant.
It's hard to get grant money, that's the thing.
Hard to get grant money. I would be willing to meet with them. I'd like to see, you know, I think, I don't think it's a bad precedent at all. I mean, if we are able to help them, and they're gonna be doing the, you know, I think we, I've always been worried about the TIF money and making sure we can use it to benefit Franklin County before somebody takes it. If we can help the taxpayers in Eustis, I would be, I'd be, I'd like to look at it.
I think it would be worth your while if I didn't hear you talk.
I'd like to.
I truly believe that, as they say, they come from a love of UTs up in that area, and I truly believe from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, that not only are they giving more recreational properties up there, but people are coming and moving in year round.
So if Julie could look into what we can do legally, I'm sure it's only half.
Well, I don't know, I could run that, but I've gotta look at that. I haven't had a chance to look at that category specifically, but I can certainly get a quick question off to her.
So let's get a meeting, no, not this month because of all the budget.
Right.
Can we do it in July or August?
Yeah, that would be great.
When you want a meeting.
And that's what the TIF committee had hoped that you would say, that you would be.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
It's new, it's just new for us, it's a new request. I mean, we have funded public safety expenses in the past, or projects, I should say, but it's been either dispatch or EMA or, you know, countywide that we have funded. So this is a little more specific to one region, so it's a little unusual for us, but.
But I'm still surprised that they haven't gone to the federal government with that request.
Yeah.
Many of, you know.
We don't know. That's why we need to have a discussion.
You're welcome.
We'll find out. Okay.
So we'll reach out to them and say, we'd like to have you come down, and we'll have the discussion.
There you go.
Great.
We'll find out.
They'll be happy with that.
Maybe in July or August, after we get by the budget.
On vacations.
Whatever.
Okay. We're going back to the last item. Indeed. Let me just continue on the broadband front. Now, you're asking, Terry, show me the jobs you've created. And I've expressed that we have far bigger problems than that. And one of them is outmigration. People graduate from high school or UMF and leaving for opportunity. If we wanna reverse that, we need to provide opportunity. And having broadband throughout the county is the keystone for that economic growth, societal and economic growth. Tim just mentioned, he's hearing or seeing sale of properties up in the northern part of the county. Those properties sell if there's access to internet. If you don't have access to internet, you can't sell your own if you're trying to get rid of it, and you're not gonna be inclined to buy one. And to live there and work there remotely, this pandemic is shining a harsh light on the importance of broadband connectivity to rural America, particularly Western Maine. There's articles in Wall Street Journal, Bloomberg, any big publication that is recognizing, there's gonna be a trend out of this. People are gonna elect to leave the crowded cities and move to the country and work remotely. There's that opportunity, reduce your cost of living and live in a beautiful place, and we've got that. But what we don't have is the internet. So to attract these people, that's a big thing we're working on, and that's an exponential creator of jobs. And they're not gonna be specific, like Jarden's adding five jobs right here. It's gonna be people work, moving here and working remotely. Education, RSU nine, thirty percent of those students don't have adequate internet to do their homework. Charlie, thirty percent of those students can't do their homework from home. So imagine what it's like in Raven or in SAD fifty-eight. So we have to bring this to the finish line, and that's one of our focuses.
I have a couple of comments on that. Thirty percent of those students don't wanna do their homework, to begin with. And downtown Wilton has had broadband for years, and it hasn't done anything for jobs. I'm still reluctant to believe all of this, and it's individuals that complain the most about having broadband. It's not companies coming into us and saying, you put broadband there, and we'll build a.
A company can pay for broadband. A company pays to bring fiber to the door. Poland Spring is in an area that there isn't adequate internet, but they pay to run fiber to their facility because they have the cash to do it. Citizens don't. So in Wilton, you have citizens who are working remotely because that's what the state directs, and so the parents are at home working, the child is at home trying to do their homework. One of them's gotta give, because they can't all be on the internet at the same time. And that's going on in your hometown, so.
But it hasn't increased.
Increased what?
In the economy, because my taxes are still going up annually.
You are gonna, those workers that are working remotely now, the employer's understanding, hmm, I could cut my overhead. Barclays is cutting their overhead. They're sending all, two-hundred-and-forty people, go home. You have a job if you have adequate internet, but we're shutting down our brick and mortar.
So companies should be paying for that, see? They should be paying for broadband.
Who should be paying?
The companies that are demanding that their workers stay home and work remotely. Why should the individual taxpayer be paying for this?
Uh, 'cause they're gonna benefit. And they could, and they could work for a company that is in New York or Boston or...
That hasn't been true in the couple of towns that I'm aware of that have broadband, so.
Then, then, let me bring you up to Carabassa Valley that has broadband, and I'll show you how many folks have moved up there and are working remotely, because they have it. And if you went up into Stratton, Eustis, it's not, it's not adequate. But right there, because of the density, they have broadband.
What companies do they have now? What have they started for companies?
They are working remotely. These are people who are living and earning and paying their taxes here.
So they haven't started a company.
They don't need to. They've got jobs outside of New England.
Okay, okay. I, when I don't, the ten thousand we give you for the TIF work, I appreciate you doing that, and I think it's, both of you deserve that kind of money. My problem is that since I've been here as commissioner, you and your previous, previous people before you, you know, we're gonna create jobs, gonna create jobs, and we keep giving you money and it doesn't work. So in good conscience, I'm not gonna give you fifty thousand. I give you less and hope that you can come back to us, like you said last year, said you were gonna do something to create jobs. You know, the, we've got a bond issue coming up on July fourteenth, which deals with, hopefully with broadband will help us.
Do you?
So I'm willing to make a contribution to this agency with the hopes that you can come back next year, which you told us you'd do this year, and show us the jobs you've created. I mean, that's why we cut it out of the budget to begin with, because no jobs are being created, and, you know, we're telling people that you're creating jobs and you're not. And so once again, we have to give you more money. I would, I would support a lesser amount than fifty thousand, but I'm not spending fifty thousand dollars, when I, when you told us last year, if you gave you the fifty, you'd create jobs, and you didn't.
Charlie, you're the ones who are telling me to create jobs, and I am here to tell you, we have a lot bigger issues ahead of us before we can work, before we can think about attracting businesses.
And every time I get a notice from you on COVID-19, I'm thinking, how many more government agencies are gonna send me that message on COVID-19? And why are you doing that? What's the purpose? What is your role in to provide that information to me? And every time I get the email, it drives me crazy. I'm thinking, how many government agencies need to talk to me about this? And you shouldn't be dealing with that at all. Your focus should be laser-like in creating job opportunities for citizens of this county if you want our money to provide your wages.
Okay.
And that's what bothers me.
All right, so Charlie, obviously, you're not reading my emails, because they are specific and directed at saving jobs, saving employers. There's federal SBA dollars out there, and it is very complex, and everyone has questions. We read through that, we distill it, and we publish actionable information that can help employers understand, here's an opportunity for me. I can go for this payroll protection, forgivable loan if I meet these criteria.
And that's the same information provided by the state and the federal government and all the, because I'm a former senator, I get all these things, and it's the same stuff. Clyde, what's your position on this, buddy? How, what do you, what level do you feel is appropriate to fund this? I mean, weren't we told?
I'm just sitting here listening, that's all. I want to ask a question. The kids up in SAD fifty-eight, okay, they're homeschooling because they can't go to school.
Correct.
Do they have broadband up in Strong and in that area?
Not, not a lot. It's not consistent.
Sit, what's the name of that company? They're going around putting things into the home so the kids can work on their computers at, at home, I understand, and they're doing it free of charge.
They, if they have coverage right there, they are offering homes that haven't previously signed up for their service, they're offering it to them at no charge during this pandemic.
Yeah, they, I understand that.
But that's if they are, if it's within their area, you know, that they're already there.
Yeah.
So they're not reaching out to areas that are unserved.
They know my neighbor's got that, but the kids, they didn't have the internet.
Spectrum.
And they put, put it into her house free of charge because the kids up there are on computers for doing their schooling. I just had that question, I wanna know what was going on with that.
So that's, that's what's going on, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen. Strong Avon Phillips, imagine, it's a black hole.
I think Charlie's job, one of his jobs is meeting with people trying to get money to keep going, and he's done that. And I believe that they need the broadband up in that area, because there is people that have businesses out of state that come here and stay and do their business right on the internet. And I don't know what they get for taxation, but I know Carabassa's doing all right.
Yeah. They have computers anyhow.
Yeah.
They're not without computers.
No.
This broadband just speeds it up, so.
Speeds it up.
Terry, it allows it to exist. It allows someone to have a computer.
Stop, because I, I don't have broadband. I never will have broadband, because it goes through downtown Franklin, the edge west. It'll never come up on Waki Hill. And so I have a speed of about three, you know, megabytes, and that's not very fast. But I exist, and that's all I need. I don't need broadband.
If you had a student living in your house, they wouldn't be able to do their homework, whether they're a nursing student, college student, or middle school?
I don't think that's quite true.
It is true, actually.
I think the world is changing, going to computers at, at home. I think that's the going, going thing. We've got to stay up with it. If we don't, we are gonna be more behind where we are now.
That is very true.
And Terry, I know how you feel, and I like to see progress, and I think Charlie's trying to do it in that area, in my area.
I would suggest that none of us are opposed to broadband. I'm not sure what Charlie's involvement, how's that's critical to getting in here? You know, I, but.
All again.
Originally, he was gonna create jobs. Now he's gonna create broadband, and eventually, when the state funds it, we'll have it. Let's come up, let's just figure out what we're gonna give him and move on. I mean, I don't know. Do you have a suggestion, Terry?
These, these. I don't believe in fifty thousand, I think that's too much, because I haven't seen a job.
That's what we're talking about.
I'm after jobs. I know broadband's important.
So this is out of the TIF, okay? These funds being requested out of the TIF, there is a DECD, Department of Economic Development, at the state creates the, is it statute, or they create the buckets that the funds?
That's correct.
That the funds come from.
Well, I mean, they, they don't create it, but they regulate it.
They regulate it. The buckets where the funds are to be invested. There is a bucket for funds to be invested in economic development. And we're not drawing from that. And of all of these very high-scoring projects, there are matches of twenty percent. I am matching it. I'm, I'm asking for a one-to-one match. It's the strongest match out of all of these projects that you have previously approved, and that the committee approved unanimously.
That's something I'll see. I haven't seen you create any jobs yet. I go to stores, I go to companies, and they don't know who you are.
Well, you're not going to Jarden's, you're not going to any of the lumber mills, Palat One, Stratton Lumber, Lignetics.
I gave you a list last year of a bunch of companies you didn't even know what they were doing.
I never saw a list from you, Terry.
You and I chatted about it.
We chatted, and we wanted to follow up, but you were never available to follow up.
Yeah, because you haven't done anything, you haven't been there. I don't wanna get, make it personal, but I'd suggest that we give them, we used to give them thirty thousand, twenty-five, thirty thousand, I'd support that.
I'll move thirty thousand dollars.
But how much ask you for?
Fifty.
Fifty.
I've raised fifty, which is what Charlie threw up there.
That's right. We, we told him, I don't wanna start an argument here, but we did tell him that we would match what he come up with.
If he created jobs, Clyde, you know.
That was not in that.
Yes, it was.
It was, if he got fifty thousand dollars, we would match it. And nothing was said about jobs, because he's gonna work on jobs, and with this match, he should be able to bring in jobs.
It allows me to continue our work towards creating jobs, but that will be an outcome of a stronger economic base. You know, the funds that I've raised, I'm clearly connecting with businesses because You know, the funds that I've raised, I'm clearly connecting with businesses, because these funds have come from businesses. They see the work that we do. They appreciate the work that we do. They wanna see us continue to work on their behalf.
And specifically, I said, and Terry echoed last year, come back to, we'll give you fifty thousand, but I want to see some jobs. I want to see, I, I wanna have a businessman tell me that you spoke to him on what you could do to help him. It hasn't happened. I'll vote for the thirty thousand.
You want to bring my son in?
It is happening.
He's got the pellet business in, in Jay, and Charlie has been there. And they've created more work. They've got three new employees. They got a federal grant. Charlie has helped them. And I know that business is growing. It got eighty ton going to Callis. They went Saturday with that. Oh, pellets, going to Callis. So I know what Charlie's doing. And I support him. He's very active. And he's helped that business a lot. And, but I don't go to every business and say, are you getting help from Charlie? That's not my role. I get the feedback. So I, I'm gonna support, well, I'm not supporting the thirty thousand. I'll support the fifty thousand. And I think we ought to do it to get it going.
And in, and in the case of Saddleback, actually, those are jobs. If that opens up, you've got two hundred employees, seasonal, granted, but it's jobs.
Sugar, if there's nine, eight hundred and something, seasonally discussion.
I ask a question, Julie. Julie, the money that this comes from, comes out of the economic development. We have very, I, I, we sat there, we devised all these, what we're gonna put so much into each account. It goes into economic development now, right? Where, where, which line are we taking it out of? We're not taking it out of, when we give the thirty thousand, or twenty thousand, or fifty, whatever we give, where does it come from under the TIF? Which?
So there's different categories.
Which categories?
Yes. So all the trail stuff is trail improvements. The book will be marketing and nature-based tourism. There's mapping categories. There's different categories in there. Now Charlie could fall, or Greater Franklin, I shouldn't say Charlie, Greater Franklin Development Council, we had this discussion. It can fall under a multitude of those categories. He, his projects, his work is outlined in here. He does marketing. Some of it could come out of marketing. Some of it could come out of dues, but you've opted not to do that in the past. Some of it could be used for economic, the match, because you asked him to go out and get matching funds, and then you would consider, because for a couple of years, you didn't give him anything. Because they weren't raising the money. And then we'll go get the match, and then, you know, we'll see what we'll do.
So Michael, the reason I ask is, every year, we, when we get the check from, from the TIF, right? We divide it up in a certain level in each account.
Yep. It is a, it's a recommended funding level. We can change any of those, but it's just recommended.
The point is, if we give them an extra twenty thousand dollars here, I would much prefer that we take that money and we give it to the citizens living in Eustace, or even Carabasa Valley. If they need to buy, if they can do it, and they can justify, and we can legally justify helping them buy a fire truck, I'd rather see them do that, and help the taxpayers there, than have this go to a bureaucracy. And that's what I see here. A bureaucracy that doesn't do what we, basic thing we ask, and that is show us job creation. That's the only thing I want this agency doing. I don't want emails about COVID. I don't want all this stuff. If you want me to use our taxpayers' money, I wanna help the taxpayers of this county. And I'd rather take that money from that account, move it into some other account, and use it to help these folks buy a fire truck, if that's what we can do legally. That's how I look at it. I'm gonna support the thirty thousand.
So.
Would you just read down to Charlie?
Yes, yes, you are. Creating jobs, it takes, there's a lot of work that has to happen. Last year, I did not say, please, accept my match and I will create jobs. It's working, taking, building the foundation under our communities and economy, so that jobs will be the result. You know, we have to have internet, you know, the actual job creation with Saddleback, that's an actual example. But there's much work to be done to get people to wanna move here, live here, and work here.
Yeah. Part of your problem, Charlie, it's not you personally. I, I think you're working hard at it. But for the last, who knows how many, twenty years, this department, this particular agency you work for has been telling the people of this county, fund us, and we will get you jobs. You didn't say that last year. We said it. I said, I'll give you this money, fifty thousand dollars, reluctantly, because I, because you're gonna try to do something to improve the economic situation of this county, so people can get a job. And it didn't happen.
I never said I'm creating jobs.
I absolutely didn't.
I said, I am working towards building the foundation to allow us to attract people to wish to, wanna live here, work here, and pay their taxes.
And for twenty years, the people for you.
I don't care about the people before.
But they came here twenty years ago and said, we're gonna build a foundation.
This is a clean slate. I am, I am moving this office forward for the last two and a half years. I'm not worried about the history. I am looking forward, taking a long view on how do we improve our community and our economic situation.
I'm sorry that, I'm, I'm sure that Charlie feels the same way, that we do remember the history, and, and that affects you.
Let's look forward.
I'm gonna call a vote. All those in favor of the thirty thousand, so signify. Those opposed. Two to ones below. Thank you. What's next? We have a cap to set. K nine, K nine contract for Rebel.
Yes. So David Ratcliffe said, I guess he'd given it to you, Terry, that's what he said. But it never did get approved.
No. We had a meeting. We came in and said he was gonna, one was gonna retire, retire one, and bring in a young dog. And I thought that must be Rebel.
So this is for Rebel. It is a health and workability guarantee for a dual-purpose police canine. And I'll let you see that. Pretty, pretty basic. We normally do that with all the canines we get from him.
Same ones we had before, don't they?
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah. And we always, we always have an agreement when we take the dog out of service, or when the dog retires.
And this is signed by the chairman?
Yeah. If you have a motion to accept that, I, I didn't see who the signature page was.
We saw them before. It's last year, same thing. You wanna get one?
Yeah, I saw.
Every time we get a new canine, we have. No, we, we signed one when we got rid of his other.
Okay.
Yep. So this is for the new one. So we retired Justice, we signed offline Justice. Turned him back over, and this is accepting Rebel.
I move we accept the contract for K nine, calling K nine contract for new dog Rebel. Thank you.
Second emotion, I guess Terry, you're the one who's gonna sign it.
All those in favor of that motion?
Unanimous, great.
I think you just need one signature on that, right?
I didn't look at it that close. I just came in on email, so didn't have a chance to read it.
You'll look at it. You'll see what you think.
That's a Donnie, Donnie. They're all for Donnies.
I, I think we make a motion on that, Terry.
I think we did. We go to the.
We did. Yeah, we did.
So Terry, you assign.
June meetings?
June meetings?
Oh, June meetings. Yes. Vicky and I have been talking. On June nineteenth, we will be getting some RFPs in for the medical services, the adult ed services, and substance abuse, abuse and mental health. RFPs will be in. So those are up at the end of the month. So we were thinking on June twenty-third, we could have a meeting to open those RFPs and have Doug from the jail and the sheriff available.
Could we do it twenty-first instead?
Sure.
I'm gonna be, I'll be back on twenty-fourth.
Yeah. We just need two meetings anyhow. And then we were thinking again on June thirty to end our fiscal year as well. Another meeting, to come in and clean up the warrants.
So can we do this on June what?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. June twenty-fifth, we're having a meeting?
Yeah. We need to do the RFPs for the jail.
Is there any chance we could do the June twenty, June thirtieth or the twenty-ninth? My mother's funeral's the thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I mean, just happened to work there. It's Monday.
June twenty-nine work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. Sure.
Yeah, I got a few. Or we can do the twenty-sixth, you know, too.
Well, let's do the twenty-fifth, because that way, that will give Doug at least four days and the sheriff to review the RFPs before they make a determination.
So we're back to the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth and twenty-ninth, yeah.
Twenty-fifth.
And twenty-ninth.
Thursday. Vote base?
Ten o'clock here.
Ten o'clock here.
And then Monday?
Yeah.
Now, what's it, do we be here, Julie? Is that?
Yes, yes, upstairs.
What time?
Ten AM.
Ten? Okay, ten. Commissioners meeting, in other words, right?
Yes.
On the twenty-ninth. At twenty-fifth, and then on the twenty-ninth again?
Yes.
I'm not available on the twenty-ninth. I have a medical appointment.
Ten AM?
And that will probably, Terry, just pretty much be the warrants and acting on the RFPs. We should be, as long as we have two, we'll be good.
That's the day I lost my daughter.
What's that? Basic housekeeping. So that, we're, we're good. We're just two.
The twenty-ninth will be what?
Ten AM.
No, I mean, what are, what are they gonna be dealing with?
So we will have an action on the RFPs, I would anticipate, after Doug and the sheriff have a chance to review them. And we have year-end warrants to clean up for our fiscal year.
Okay. Just basic stuff.
Yeah, housekeeping, correct.
While we're talking, what are we gonna do in July?
It won't be new.
I mean, we, we're not, we're obviously, are we gonna, is it planned to meet on the seventh? Can we meet the fourteenth? Can we do the middle of the month?
I think it was the fourteenth, correct?
I think we talked about.
Yeah, because the budget committee's July twelfth.
Eight.
Eight, okay, sorry.
They're meeting on?
So we'll skip the first, we'll skip the first Tuesday and go to the fourteenth for July?
The budget meeting's July eighth.
So, so the next commissioners meeting, the first commissioners meeting in July will be July fourteenth?
Then maybe the.
July fourteenth?
Yep, could be.
Okay, ten. All right. And the budget, is that the public hearing?
So the public hearing is going to be June twenty-ninth at six PM here, is my understanding.
I, I'm waiting, I have to ask you back over.
Okay.
On the fourteenth.
Six PM, I believe, public hearing.
It'd be our first one?
So what was that, Clyde?
Okay, now we'll go back to the twenty-ninth again. And you said something about the budget committee?
Budget committee's on?
June twenty-ninth, the budget committee. No, I'm confused. Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay.
At five thirty.
The twenty-ninth of June.
Six PM is the public hearing.
Yeah, all right. Six PM. Correct me, sorry.
And then they'll make official votes on the, on the eighth?
Yes.
That's correct.
On budget.
On the eighth of June is when they're voting?
July.
July.
And we don't be here on the eighth of June, they?
July.
Don't have here, do it?
No.
Five thirty.
On the vote, yes. Not the public hearing. The public hearing is the only one, is at six PM. The rest are five thirty.
So in July, we're meeting the fourteenth, and is that it?
We'll see. Possibly.
Okay. To be determined.
To be determined.
That is, that depends on the votes and how early votes are.
Yes. We'll see how that plays out.
Yeah, okay. We don't meet the seventh, so that would usually be a regular meeting.
That is right. We'll move to the fourteen.
Going to the fourteen.
Yeah, that will accommodate the budget.
And then the next meeting would be twenty-first?
We'll see.
To be determined.
To be determined.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Were you emoting that? No, not really?
Not really. No, okay.
Is that it for new business?
I have to, too miscellaneous.
We, old business, we need an LD cap?
Yes, I forgot about that. So every year with the budget, of course, I send out the letter to the municipalities asking them to send in their LD one cap calculations. And it is a process to get all of those back from the municipalities in a good year. In light of the COVID-19 and all the municipalities that have been closed, the ones I, I don't think I even have a third of the responses back. And we're getting up against it. We've got to do the calculation. So listening, looking at the emails from the other counties, a lot of what the other counties are doing, where actually, some of the municipalities pushed back that April one deadline, where you have to report for personal property. So what they're doing, if they don't get a new one by the deadline, which is already passed, they're going back and using their last year's LD one cap. And that seems to be in a reasonable accommodation, so. Is that okay with everybody? Because I need to do the calculation.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a good, we'll take the new ones that we have, and if not, we'll use last year's information. Well, it was quarter, I didn't do a count. I, I think it was roughly two-thirds I do not have back. Well, they were closed, and they didn't, and they probably didn't even get the letter asking for the information. And a lot of them, the boards are the actual assessors, if they don't hire them, so it's understandable. It's not getting done. You can understand why, I mean.
You know, one of the towns will be using last year's budget.
Exactly. Yeah, it's just a.
So does the county go over the cap this year?
No, we have not recently at all. No, we've, we've been under, we've not had a cap issue for many years. We've always been well under. And I don't anticipate this year either, then that the cap will be an issue.
Okay. All right. Miscellaneous.
Yes. So in front of you, you have a copy of that TDS where we had previously approved to allow them to locate that piece of equipment. This just came in on email last night. This is a picture of where it is going to be located with the physical description, et cetera. And they're asking for your approval of that and to sign off on that.
It's different. They were gonna be on the Smith Road. Now they've changed it, right?
I can't recall, Clyde.
I would have checked it and see if it was all right.
So where, where are they locating it now?
It was on the Smith Road, at the intersection of the Smith Road and the West Kingfield Road. And now they've moved it up where the Red Dart is? That'd be private land. That's not a county road.
Okay, so let me write this down. So it was the Smith Road. And this does not appear to be the Smith Road. This is, what road did you indicate that is?
It's West Freeman Road.
West Freeman Road.
Oh, I see it now.
Yeah.
Or maybe even the Freeman Road.
That's not a, that's on private land?
Thank you, Clyde.
I will email them back.
Well, we can give permission to put that in.
The landowner may not be happy. When they pull up to do the install.
Good.
Cable's time. Okay, cool. We'll back Burner that one. How's that?
Okay.
And finally, so Summerfest is not happening in Farmington this year. However, we did get a request from them. They would like to locate a portable toilet in the courthouse parking lot July twenty-fourth through July twenty-seventh. And that would be a Friday and a Monday when we are open.
Which is law now? Is that?
I don't know. That's all my message said. It was just a handwritten, Vicky, I think you took the phone call.
Yep.
They want to accommodate shoppers in the downtown, is what I heard.
So it stands over to a Monday?
It starts on, they want it all day Friday and Monday. And I mean, we're open for business. I don't know if the courts are gonna be here. I, it's one thing if they're having the festival, but I mean.
Where will they locate?
But still.
Where will it be located?
In the parking lot.
And the passersby down here. If you're footed by the dumpster, it would be out of your way.
Yeah, let's tell them if they wanna do it.
It's gonna be by the dumpster.
If you wanna buy a dumpster. And I, I think we ought to accommodate them if we can. But I'd be right.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on that or not?
Yes, we always do. And they're gonna have to have insurance.
Yes.
Yeah, they have.
Who is, what's the outfit?
It's the Summerfest people. We do it every year. Usually, they use the parking lot one weekend out of the year.
The weekend, right?
Yep. But they're not holding, they're not holding that, but I guess they're trying to promote shopping in the downtown. Vicky took the phone call, so am I.
Yeah. That's what they're trying to do, is to promote people to come up shopping, or, and they have a place for them to use.
What, that gonna do to us on Monday, that we're open for business?
Well, I guess if we locate it by the dumpster, it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
That's the portable toilet we're talking about, right?
Right. Not the parking lot.
Well, how about the parking lot? Aren't they gonna be using the park?
No, they're not, they're not holding anything, because that's a gathering.
It's a gathered?
They're not going to do that.
They're not gonna do that Monday?
No, but they just wanna put a, they just want a portable toilet here, for whatever their reason is.
I move that we authorize the summer committee to.